We'll call this meeting to order. Tonight is Monday, March 23rd, and we're here for our regular school board meeting. It's a fun one when we get to start with a spotlight. And tonight Superintendent Metz is going to talk about one of our teachers and administrative staff members, LeAnn Stevens.
Thank you. I want to call LeAnn up to the podium. LeAnn, come on up. And LeAnn is someone who's worked in St. Louis Park for a long time, and I don't want to say we take her for granted, because we don't, because she's always here doing great things for our kids. But the list of things that she's been doing just keeps growing and expanding, and we thought it'd be appropriate to recognize her and give her a minute to speak to the board tonight. So I'm going to read a list of organizations and activities that LeAnn has been part of outside of St. Louis Park. A few years ago, I think it was 2007, LeAnn was named the Minnesota Teacher of the Year, and a great credit to us here in St. Louis Park. But that also kicked off her growing influence in the state of Minnesota and really across the whole country. And so here's the list that I have in front of me that we want to recognize LeAnn for. Besides being a Minnesota Teacher of the Year, she's recently been elected to the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards as a Board of Director. She is part of the Practitioner Advisory Group for the Center on Great Teachers and Leaders. She's on the Board of Teaching Evaluation Team, which means she's been out evaluating Minnesota teacher prep programs at Augsburg, Minnesota State University Mankato, Gustavus Adolphus, and Minnesota State University Morehead. She's part of the National Association of State Directors of Teacher Education and Certification Model Code for Educator Ethics Task Force. She was recently named one of the 11 Most Interesting Minnesota Educators for 2014 by MinPost. She is a MinCan Board Member, and last year invited me to one of their events, and a Teacher Leader for the National Network of State Teachers of the Year. So besides being an advocate for students here in St. Louis Park and doing a great job, her influence around the state and around the nation continued to grow, and we are proud to recognize her tonight. So congratulations, LeAnn, for your great work. And I would say even more importantly than all of those things is we were visiting in the high school cafeteria last week, and it was impossible to have a five-minute conversation with her, because every single student that came by said hello, Ms. Stevens, and she stopped and said hello by name, named the student. And that is a bigger award than all of these other awards. So Board Chair Schweitzer has a certificate for you, and I want to give you a chance to say a few words.
Okay. So do I take this first?
No, you can have it first.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'd love to hear from you.
Yes.
Julie, Susan, why are you there? Can I grab a picture?
Well, we can let LeAnn talk.
So, thank you. When Mr. Metz told me about this, I think he was looking at my face, and I was kind of like, oh, okay. And he's like, no, this is kind of a big deal. I didn't think he thought I was excited enough, but really, I am, and I really appreciate this. And what I appreciate the most is the support. I'm going to try not to cry, because St. Louis Park has been so good to me, and I've gotten so much support, and I get it from administrators, and I get it from Mr. Metz, and I get it from you, the board, and I really, really appreciate that so much, because I wouldn't be able to do all that I'm doing if I didn't have your support. And so I just want you to know that wherever I go, that I'm representing St. Louis Park, and people are really impressed with the work that we're doing, because I'm able to share that. Actually, two weeks ago, I was in DC, and then the last week, well, I just got back yesterday from Dallas. And so in another two weeks, I'm going back to Arlington, Virginia, and then I have to go to Portland, Oregon. So I have all these things to do, but they're great, because I'm doing the work, and I'm able to continue to elevate the teaching profession, but also put St. Louis Park out there as well. So that's really exciting for me. So again, I just really want to thank you for all your support. It means so much to me, more than you would ever, ever know.
You jumped the gun a little bit. So now we'll have a nice photo shoot. Shiny certificate. Let's put you in the middle. Good job on that. Anyway, I think she's getting used to it now.
Thanks, LeAnn. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
LeAnn is just one of our wonderful teachers here in St. Louis Park, so we're very grateful for her. Next item is the approval of the agenda, and the agenda that we have for tonight includes first open forum, then the superintendent's report. Then we have four discussion items. The General Obligation Alternative Facilities Bond, the 2016 Achievement and Integration Revenue Budget. Third is the Jarvis Grant Update, and last is the signers for district payments at Citizens Bank. I promise you, that will be the most exciting discussion. Then we have the consent agenda, and two items on the action agenda. Approval of the resolution for General Obligation Bonds, Health and Safety, and approval of Citizen Bank signers. Then communications and transmittals, followed by adjournment. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So, second.
Motion by Jim, second by Bruce. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries, seven zero, and the vote, and the agenda, rather, is approved. Open forum, it's an opportunity for our public to address us. Do we have any cards for open forum? Okay, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. I have two items I'd like to speak to tonight. The first is the Highway 100 construction. Our community residents received from us, or our families received a postcard from us early last week, reminding them that the construction was about to begin. The construction was originally scheduled for April, and I say "construction," what I'm really referring to is the closure of the Minnetonka Boulevard Bridge crossing Highway 100. Was originally scheduled for April. Because of the nice March weather, it was moved up to today, actually. So the bridge actually closed today. That's going to cause some issues with our bus routes. Our bus company had been preparing for this all along, and they had to speed up their plans when the bridge closing moved up. But for the vast majority of our students, nearly all of our students, many things will stay the same. They will ride the exact same bus, they will have the same bus driver, they will see the same students on the bus, and the bus will stop at or very near the same location. The thing that will change is the times, the pickup times in the morning and the drop-off times in the afternoon. So all of the new times are posted on the school district website, which is www.supschools.org. And the most important thing families can do is to go to that website, find their child's route, and find their new times. Having said that, tomorrow is the first day of this new experience. And the bus company and none of us are actually sure how accurate those times are going to be, because we are guesstimating what the traffic reroute is going to look like. It's not only going to reroute the buses, of course, but it'll reroute all of the traffic, people going to work, people dropping their children off at school. And so even though it may seem like the reroute is a good idea, when we get firsthand look at it, the bus company may make changes two days away, three days away, five days away. So it's important for parents to keep checking that website and making sure their pickup and drop-off times are working for them. We're encouraging parents to be patient. If the bus isn't there on time, the buses are coming. Every child will get picked up, no matter how long it takes. And we'll be watching it day by day as it goes. If parents have questions after they check the website, the next best place to go is to call the school directly. This is not our normal procedure. Normally, we tell people to call the bus company, but the bus company just does not have enough operators online to handle all the calls they may get. So we're encouraging families to call the schools directly. The people who are answering the phones at the schools are ready, they have all the information, and they'll be able to help answer all the questions. So tomorrow is the first big day, and we're interested and excited to see how that goes. Just before the meeting tonight, I recorded another phone call that's being sent home as we speak, and so we'll give parents one more reminder that this is starting up tomorrow. The second thing I'd like to do is to just remind the community that our high school principal hiring process has begun. It's been long awaited, and it's finally begun, and I'm going to ask Rick Cryer, our HR Director, to speak to that at this time.
Superintendent, Men of Chair, members of the board, we are, we're very excited to get this underway. I'm going to put a document up here, and then I can provide the document for the board members, so that you have it. Maybe if I... We're kicking off the announcement. We posted the position last Friday on our website and included it on a number of websites across the state of Minnesota that focus primarily on K-12 positions, k12jobs.com, the Maspo, Maspa, Massa, all the Massas that are going for teaching and principal positions. This, then, we're doing some new things with this round, and we're going to have a stakeholder listening session on April 9th. And there we have an hour or so set aside with students, another hour set aside with high school staff, and then in the evening, from 6 till 7 p.m., with parents and community stakeholders that are going to be invited. And Sarah Thompson's created a communication plan to get the word out to the various stakeholder groups, and so that's starting this week, as we're working with the students and the staff at the high school, but then reaching out to the community as well. We're going to have applications due as soon as March 30th, and then we'll be into the first round of interviews by April 13th. Next round of interviews by the end of April, about the 21st, and if all goes as expected, we should be able to bring a recommendation to the board at the May 11th meeting. Is there any questions, or?
Nancy?
Rick, I have one, and you may have just said it, but I'll ask again. Is the reason for the timing now, because we think this is the time when we'll gather the better, more potential candidates will be looking and be willing to participate at this time of the year? It's kind of a seasonal thing, looking for a principal?
Correct, yeah. Basically, a high school principal, most principal jobs are finalized before the end of the school year. This is the time that a principal would be making a look at changing for the fall. Nobody likes to leave in the middle of the year, and by the time you get to summer, they're so set on getting off to a good start, that it's hard to get a person to change in the summer.
Any other questions? Joe?
Just a comment, I suppose, both in terms of the higher end, the stakeholder groups, just making sure that we're, you know, being representative of the community and reaching out to all the folks who make it up.
Yeah, very conscious decision there, and we have some groups that we're reaching out to particularly to ensure that we'll have a diverse cross-section of parents and students who give us input.
Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, Superintendent Metz, anything else in your report?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The first discussion item is the General Obligation Alternative Facility Bonds, Health and Safety Projects, and Director Sandy Saleen is going to be presenting along with Gary Olson from Ellers.
And I'm going to jump in and do a little introduction for Sandy and Gary about the pools. For the community's benefit, I'm recommending tonight that we repair the HVAC systems in all three of our swimming pools. The school district maintains three swimming pools. They're located at Central School, the Middle School, and the High School. Our pools were built many years ago, and although they have been maintained well, the air circulation system in each of the pools is in need of repair. Technically, they're grandfathered in as being compliant, but we have received numerous complaints. The complaints keep growing, and it appears that this is a good time to repair these pools. I'm recommending that later tonight, the board approve a resolution stating that the intention of the board is to issue General Obligation Bonds that will fund these repairs. I'm doing so because the pools are both school district and community assets, and they're heavily used, both by the school district and the community. They've been here for a long time, and they will serve our students for many years into the future. So with that introduction, I will turn it over to Sandy, and she will explain the financing that is necessary to repair these pools.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent Metz. And as we said, we got Gary Olson here from Ellers, who's going to be doing. Any questions and answers that you may have, or comments, and answering any questions that you may have. We went through a process through being able to get approved for this, first of all, through the Minnesota Department of Education. Since these are General Obligation Bonds that are for health and safety projects only, they are actually funded through our Alternative Facilities Program through the state. And with that program, they require us to get approval from the Commissioner through the Minnesota Department of Education. So we already went through that process and got that approval, and Ellers has provided us with an option of being able to go through financing. And with that, I can, we kind of went through it, but I think maybe we can go through it briefly again, as far as what the options are and the proposal is to fund, and maybe we'll put this on the Elmo, that we can show what the tax impact would be.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm going to let Gary Olson from Ellers explain this to you.
We looked at a couple different options for how you could finance this. We looked at an eight-year option and a 10-year option, and they're structured a little bit differently. One is what we call a wraparound schedule, where we're coordinating your new debt with your old debt. And the second option, the 10-year option, is just more like what you'd see in a conventional loan or a mortgage, where all the payments are equal across the entire timeframe of the bond issue. There is a slight difference in the cost, but it's very slight, but as you can see, there's a much bigger change in the tax impact. If you look at this, you can see on a $250,000 house, you're talking about $2 a year increase for taxes. Next year's taxes for 2016 would increase by about $2. If you were to do the 10-year level payment option, that increase would go to $14 a year. So that, those are the two options that the board had looked at.
Could you also tell us a little bit about the difference in cost? I don't think you said the number. You said there was a little difference.
Okay. It's very little. Let me see, I need this. Excuse me. Steal this for a minute. The overall, the main difference would be the overall interest cost. If you do the eight-year, the overall interest cost is just under $307,000. If you did the 10-year level payment one, it would be about $240,000. So there is a slight difference in interest, but it's not, it's, I guess, some people are looking at that and saying, okay, that's the, there's a little bit of difference in interest, but we're able to reduce the tax impact dramatically by doing that. And so I think that's maybe what the choice of the board has been, or their recommendation, I think, and what they're looking at is being as kind to the taxpayers as possible.
Well, I think that we're looking for the recommendation from the superintendent on that, too.
Yes, and thank you. That is my recommendation, that we go with the eight-year wraparound option, which would, for a $250,000 home, amount to $2 per year for next year. $2 is more appropriate.
So, board members, are there questions that you would like to ask? We should say, for the members of the audience, we did discuss this at an early meeting, so we could go into more detail with Mr. Olson from Ellers, but I think we want to go through any questions or similar issues here. I know one thing I wanted to emphasize that we had talked about in our early meeting. I think it's unusual for a district to have three pools, and in fact, the Benild Swim Team swims and trains and competes at our schools, because they don't have a pool, but we talked with our community ed director, and our pools are used heavily. She said last year, the high school was used virtually all of its available time. Central, it was about two-thirds of the available hours. And, no, excuse me, the Middle School, about two-thirds, and Central, around 53 percent. Central's the only place we can offer daytime lessons, which are frequent and heavily used and affordably priced, unlike some others in the region. So that was important to me. Some of us on the board remember five or six years ago when we talked about possibly closing a pool, and there were quite a few members of our community who came at that point and said, no, don't, you know, you're the best game in town. And we made some financial adjustments then, but it sounds like that heavy use and appreciation has continued. So Nancy, do you have something to add?
I just wanted to ask, if we've said it already, or just to say it again, is there a time, if we approve this, what's the timeframe going forward?
Thank you. Good question. It's too late to get the work done this summer, and actually, because of the extremely busy construction season in the Twin Cities this summer, summer construction is challenging for a variety of reasons. But we are still on track to begin the repairs in the fall. So the schedule would be tackling the high school pool first, which would mean moving the fall girls' swim season to the Middle School, then the Middle School pool next in the winter season, and then Central School would come last in the spring. So our athletic director, Andy Ewell, has met with community ed staff. They've already reworked the entire schedule, so it turned out to be very doable, and have coordinated with Benild, who uses the Middle School pool. And so the scheduling of the rerouting, so to speak, of a year of swimming has already been completed, so that is a doable task. So the high school in the fall, the Middle School in the winter, and Central School in the spring.
And just one follow-up question on that, and I, since this is anticipated to be a construction during the school year, what impact, and how do you anticipate managing the impact on learning when we're having construction happening in the schools during the year?
Yes, we did discuss that with the architects, and we believe we can do that. All of the schools are, the two school pools, the high school pool and the Middle School pool, are located on the outside edge of the structures, and so that work should be able to be completed without interrupting the school day.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay. Cindy, this resolution, we don't, do we have to read it? No, okay, good. My question is whether we had to read the three-page resolution out load and out loud, and Cindy had the right answer, which was no. So I just want to make sure that the resolution has designated that particular choice. I think we need to state, if there is a motion, we need to specify which of the funding options we're choosing, right? That does not...
It's not actually part of the resolution.
So it isn't there, okay.
But in order for us to put together that official statement document and get everything out and get it to the, you know, get ready to take bids on the bonds, we need to, we have to present a structure to the underwriters on how you're structuring your debt, and so we need to know that in order to continue on with the next steps.
Okay, then I think we could take a motion to pass the resolution as stated to implement the eight, make sure I stated, the wraparound, eight-year wraparound funding model. And we'll do that at the action item. Right, that's right, thank you. We don't do that right now. We do that at the action item. But so is everybody asked, okay, then, any other questions we want to ask of Ellers, or we're okay for now? All right, that's it for the discussion item. Thank you.
You know, well, you know what?
Maybe, yes. Jim?
We should just add, I don't know if we went in detail for our public on why we're doing it.
Go ahead.
Just, and Sandy, we were looking at it, and we realized that we weren't necessarily meaning best practices, although we provided a safe environment, there were some deficiencies, at least vis-à-vis how pools are maintained, and they were their air quality, and we had had some complaints, correct? Is that what?
That's correct. It started out with the complaints, and we brought IEA, who's our Institutional Environmental Association, that comes in and works with us and does testing to see if there's any issues. And they did find an airflow issue, not necessarily the chemicals in the pool weren't wrong, it was just an airflow issue of being able to take the chemicals off of the top of the pool and get the airflow to work properly. So that was an issue. We are in compliance for the fact that we are grandfathered in, so it wasn't necessarily that we weren't in compliance, but it's something that we should fix, since we have had numerous complaints.
Thank you. Okay, then I think we'll move on to our next discussion item, and that is the 2016 Achievement and Integration Revenue Budget, and Superintendent Metz is going to present this budget.
Thank you, board members. I'm here with Jared Chapman. He is an assessment specialist for the school district. He works with Prachi Mukherjee in our Office of Assessment, and he's been helping the school district navigate the complexities of the Achievement and Integration Grant, which helps us a great deal in St. Louis Park. The Achievement and Integration Grant funds a variety of programs for our students and professional learning opportunities for our staff, and it's really focused on helping us close the achievement gap. It's a three-year plan. My glasses are coming to the rescue. Thank you. It's a three-year plan, and we were here last year, about exactly a year ago, approving the plan itself, but now we're required to come back every year and approve the budget year by year. And so what you have in your packet is the second-year budget. We're presenting it for your consideration tonight. We're not asking you to approve it until our next meeting, two weeks down the road. But this is a good time for us to present the budget, for you to present questions to us that we will then find the answers to, and be back in two weeks with those answers and asking for your approval. Jared is going to begin by giving you some of the rules that we have to follow when we create these budgets, and then I'm going to come back and highlight some of the items that we're funding through this grant.
Thank you, Superintendent Metz. So essentially, as Superintendent Metz described, last year, we had our plan document approved with MDE, which is a three-year document, and now that we're moving into our second year, our budget is divided into three categories. There is our direct student services, which can comprise no more than 80 percent of our total budget. The professional development section can be no more than 20 percent of our total budget, and the administrative or indirect costs can be no more than 10 percent of the total budget. So working within that 80, 20, 10 rule, we have the flexibility to divide. Yes, I do realize that that does not add up to 100 percent. It is, that gives us the flexibility to allocate the total budget as we see best fits our district's needs while following the... needs while following the rules and staying in compliance with what MDE is asking of us. And really, they say that you cannot go over 80 percent, over 20 percent, or over 10 percent for any of the specific areas. Along this process, it's more difficult on the first year, and we worked very closely with MDE, with numerous phone calls, getting things approved, trying to work out some of the nuances. And this year's, with this being year two of our plan, our budget for this year is largely the same budget that we had approved last year by MDE and that you, the board, saw last year. So with that, I can certainly answer any questions that you have with any more specifics.
Questions? Joe?
So could you kind of go into what changes were made, just maybe from a higher, higher level?
Certainly, yeah. There really weren't any changes that we made as a district. What, I can maybe say what some of the types of funding pieces that we do use. Within our direct student services, that's an excellent opportunity for us to fund certain positions, like our multicultural liaisons that we have in the district. With our professional development area, that's a good opportunity for us to fund our, provide some resources for our equity coaching model. And with our administrative and indirect costs, it's, can provide funding for some of our PYP coordinators, and so those are, those are examples of things that we're funding within the three areas. But as I said, our budget for this year is the same as last year's budget, so that, MDE, when I had my last conversation with them, they were largely thankful that we didn't change anything from last year because it makes their job easier as well.
So, so just to, oh, go ahead.
Just to add a little more detail, I want to highlight a few things that are included in this budget because they are items that, if they don't work, we're going to change. So in the world of school, we don't have a lot of opportunity for research and development or experimenting, trying new things, reaching out and trying to make a difference with something that we, you know, is not part of the locked-in general fund. This is one place where we can try something and see if it works, and if it doesn't work, we can change it. And I'll highlight a few of those. If you look at page, well, actually, it's the first real budget page, there's a category called math support class and reading support class. Board members will remember that there's a new middle school model operating this year for the first time, a true coordinated middle school. And as part of that, this is the first year where we're offering an extra math class and an extra reading class. Actually, we're requiring an extra reading class and an extra math class for students who are not yet achieving a grade level at the middle school. This is where that's funded from. If you look down at the bottom of that same page, there's something called Plato licenses and Plato salaries. That is our online credit recovery option at the high school. So at the high school, if you fail a class, you can either retake the class from a high school teacher, or you can retake it online. And we use a program called Plato as our online credit recovery course option. That's partially funded out of this grant. If you turn to the next page, there are three multicultural positions funded out of this grant. One of them is at the middle school, one of them is funding Ms. Stevens, who we saw earlier tonight at the high school, and one is, one of them is funding our Somali liaison. So there are some real things in this, in this grant that are important to the district that we get a chance to fund through these dollars, and then we measure, and we see if we're getting better results. And if we're not, we have the opportunity to change them and try something else. So I really appreciate that opportunity. One more thing I'll highlight, and then I'll, Jared and I can answer questions, is on the third page, you'll see half of an equity coach in this model, or in this, built into this grant. You'll remember that in cooperation with our teachers' union and as part of our ATPPS QComp system, we're now using a good chunk of our ATPPS dollars to fund three equity coaches this year. Think of them as teacher coaches that coach specifically on how to close the gap in an individual teacher's classroom. We're going to increase the number of equity coaches next year, and part of the reason we can do that is because of these funds. So these are important dollars, and they're really targeted to help us close the achievement gap, and they give us an opportunity to do things that we would not normally get the opportunity to do. So I wanted to highlight a few of those because it's important. It's important for the school district, and it's important for our students.
Jim?
So, I agree, I like the idea that we have some funds available to try certain things, but how long do you give something a chance, and then how are you kind of measuring it?
Yeah, so that all kind of ties into our plan document that we submitted last year, and we set very specific measurable goals with our reading gap that we had, as well as our math gap for achievement. And what we do is we take some of our very specific line items in our budget and link them to our goals. And so with our reading and math proficiency scores on our MCA tests every year, that's how we will measure whether or not we're tracking for progress or not. And have I answered your question?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to add on one other piece to what Superintendent Metz said. Every one of these pieces that's in the budget is tied to research, so as he mentioned, this does give us an opportunity to kind of try new things within our school district, but they are all research-based initiatives, so they're not just things that we think sound like a good idea, they're all grounded in research.
And I would add, the last time the legislature approved these dollars, they came with more restrictions, so more of the money this time has to be used on direct student programming, and the results that we get have to be reported. And so we're going to be getting feedback from the Department of Education on whether, how we use these dollars actually resulted in better student performance.
Nancy?
So as I read this, we're getting, the grant is about $750,000 for the next fiscal year, and it's sort of research-based, innovative things we've been doing, we're continuing to do to try to close the achievement gaps so that all students succeed. Here's a summary.
Yes, and as we look at the results each year, believe me, we're sitting down and we're saying, you know, is this working? Did this work? Are we going to use these monies again the same way? Or are we going to shift it and use it for something else? If we're funding something that's getting us nowhere, we're not going to fund it anymore.
Thank you. This is exciting work, I think, that we're doing, and I'm hoping that we do get the results that are intended, and if we don't, we'll rethink it and redo it.
Anybody else? Oh, Ken?
How did we come in last year with the 80, 20, 10 rule?
Can you say more specifically, as in, how did we divide up the money?
As far as actuals, we did the projections, or the budget was at 80 percent, 20, whatever the budget was, how did we come in to the 80 percent, was it children, or related to the children?
Direct student services are comprised no more than 80 percent. Professional development comprises no more than 20 percent, and administrative or indirect costs comprise no more than 10 percent. And I can say that we were below 80, 20, and 10 percent respectively for each of those three for last year, as well as for this year. However, to give you the exact breakup of the pie, unfortunately, I don't have that number right now. I'd be happy to send it to you tomorrow if you prefer.
Sure. I'd just be interested to see that it's not a huge shift to one or the other.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you very much for that update. The next item is the Jarvis Grant Overview with Carrie Ross, our Director of Teaching and Learning. I know we've heard a little bit about this before, but we're going to get more information now.
Madam Chair, members of the board, several months ago, we applied for a Jarvis Grant with Purdue University. Purdue has a Center for Gifted and Talented Education that is run by Dr. Marsha Gentry, and she was looking for 100 elementary schools across the nation, actually in eight specific states, to participate in a five-year study that, based on the work that she has done to create differentiated learning specifically for gifted and talented learners, that is demographically representative of school districts and includes underrepresented populations. We applied, and we recently received notification that we were accepted. Our application was accepted into the grant. So we have an opportunity now to work with Purdue, and I'm just going to give you a little update about what that work involves and answer any questions that you might have. It's a $2.3 million grant over the next four and a half years, and there will be hands-on support from the Purdue staff here in St. Louis Park. We actually worked with Matt Fugate from Purdue last year, looking at some redesign of our gifted and talented program specifically at the elementary school. And one of the models we were looking closely at happens to be the total school clustering model, which is what this Jarvis Grant provides funding for. It's well researched, it's well established. The whole point of it is to bring a wider variety of students, more diverse students, more students of color, students from underrepresented populations, into a gifted and talented program. Right now, we serve about 260 students in our gifted and talented program at the elementary level, and it is not demographically representative of our school district, and we would like to change that. So using a research-based model to do that seems like a prudent thing to do. It also benefits all of the school. So when we cluster students into groups for differentiation, all students benefit from the teaching strategies and the skills and the opportunities that are afforded to the students, not just the students that are advanced academically. Right now, in our current program, our students receive pull-out services from our gifted and talented teachers, and they may be seen once, twice, or three times a week, depending on their needs. And in this model, they would get support from their classroom teacher and the gifted and talented teacher all day, every day. So they would be differentiated in many, many ways. This is an exceptional opportunity for us here in St. Louis Park to be one of 100 elementary schools, to be in this program. It helps our teachers and our leaders do three important things: increase student achievement, recognize and develop talent among our students, specifically our students of color, and routinely use these strategies that are found to be effective for raising student achievement. It is a significant body of work that Marsha Gentry has done over the course of time, and for her to extend this opportunity for us is very exciting and something that we are very, looking at very closely. The way it works, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself here, let's talk a little bit about who is in in Minnesota. There are 16 school districts that have expressed interest here in the state of Minnesota. Not all 16 are going to be in the program, probably about eight will eventually be in the program. But we hope to be among those eight that'll be in the final, in the final group. They are looking forward to working with us as well. We've had a few meetings with the Purdue folks to plan next steps, including some training that'll be happening in the next month or so. We start training for our leadership teams very, very soon. That's the first thing you see on this slide. And then the program continues for the next four years, where Purdue will come here and work closely with one of our elementary schools that has not yet been identified. As soon as we identify that school, that, those leadership, the leadership from that school will participate in the, in the intensive training. It includes the building principal, their IB TOSA, and a couple other staff members that they designate to be part of the leadership team. We'll also identify somebody at the district level to help coordinate that process for them and work as the intermediary with Purdue. Then we have a few years of study and implementation, and by the end of this grant, five years from now, we'll be able to expand this total school cluster grouping model across the district to all four of our elementary schools. So we start out slow with a scaling up model, collect data, and train our teachers and train our leaders, and then they in turn help train other folks across the district to do this work. So it's meaningful and relevant and specific to the needs of our school district with the guidance and support of Purdue along the way. So there are many benefits to us. Not only do we get training from Purdue University, we get a little teeny tiny bit of money. We don't get a whole lot of money out of the deal, certainly not like the integration grant. We get a little bit of money to help with the coordination and the training. We get all of the materials for free, all the professional development for free, and then the ongoing hands-on support from the Purdue folks. And then there's online interaction continuously. Think of it as coaching as we go through implementation, and then we get our data, we share our data with the experts, and we get their feedback and their ideas about how we could be using the information to identify the students that we would like to have identified in our gifted and talented programs. So that's it in a nutshell. Our next steps include identifying the school where we would be trying this, we would call it the pilot site. As I mentioned, there is some leadership training coming up, and we will be then creating a training plan for that school staff and communicating it with families, and hopefully be ready to begin when school starts next fall. Our current district gifted and talented teachers would stay in place. They would be working within the building to work with teachers, to co-teach lessons in classrooms, to provide professional development and support. There still would be some pull-out programs for our most highly gifted students, but a lot less pull-out programs than there is now. It would be more in-class support, more collaborative support from the adults in the school. So it's a more robust program. It's not just a couple of hours a week or an hour a week. It's intended to be all-day, everyday support in a differentiated environment that's good for all kids. And that's just the general overview. I'm sure you have questions.
Questions from the board. Ken?
So I was wondering if you can explain kind of the nuts and bolts of the program. If, I understand, well, I don't understand it really, so I can shoot out some stuff, but why don't you go ahead and tell us?
So let's say a third-grade teacher currently will have students in her class that ranges from any wide range of skills. It could be students that are in ESL programs, it could be special education students, it could be gifted and talented students, it could be students that are not getting any supplemental services, it could be students that need reading intervention, and they're all combined in one classroom. And to meet the needs of all of those students at one time by one person is a daunting task. So in a total school clustering model, we look at all of the individual needs of students, and we, we sort them into lists of how we can best support them. So for example, instead of having six different needs in a particular classroom, there might be students that are clustered in that classroom that have three specific needs, could be gifted and talented students, ESL learners, and students that receive reading intervention. So it's easier then to provide supplemental services within the classroom, and it's easier for the teacher to differentiate lessons in reading and math and science and social studies because they're planning for three groups of kids instead of six groups of kids. The benefit also for kids that are, let's... The benefit also for kids that are, let's say, highly proficient readers, being in a different classroom, they're not competing with the gifted and talented kids. They're also accelerating their learning. So in this model, it's been proven to accelerate the learning of all kids because the differentiation can be so much more specific and so much more deeper than maybe, than it would be without being intentional about how we place kids in a learning environment.
So then, let me second. So then, it's, in theory, you're putting a bunch of different leveled kids together. And then the ones at a higher level will bring up the ones with, influence these lower-level ones to step up their game. And then we also provide other services, if needed, for the higher-level ones to continue to become GT.
Exactly.
Jim?
So I thought I heard maybe a little different. So would this, this program, would it change how we select, put kids and teachers? You know, you want less variance, it sounds like. So we're going to try to limit to three groups, for example, in one classroom. So it'll go a lot on last year's test score and how we place kids for the next year's teacher? Is that?
It will change how we place kids in classrooms. There are, there is an additional assessment. It's called the COGET seven. It's, it provides us different information than we get from the standardized tests, such as an MCA or a MAP test. So it's an, it's an ability test rather than an achievement test for students. And it gives us another piece of information about how to best think of a child as a whole rather than just on one data point. And we do cluster those kids together. So example, if there are four third-grade classrooms, we might put two gifted and talented students in every classroom to kind of spread the wealth. In this scenario, it would maybe just be in two classrooms where there would be gifted and talented students. And the other two classrooms, there would be groups of highly academic, or highly achieving readers instead. So we use the data and we collect specific data for this. And then we do rearrange how we provide placement for students into different classrooms.
And would this be an annual test at each grade or at particular grade levels? Or how does that fit in with our maybe trying to get away from more testing?
Well, yeah, there's always that trade-off. You're right about that. And the COGET seven is an assessment that we already use in some of our grade levels. It would just be a little bit, it would be a little bit more, not a big piece more because we already do it for all first graders and all fifth graders. So we already have a practice of doing it.
Okay. And then on this model, would it, would it overall, my understanding is it wouldn't increase the number of students who are fitting within GNT. It might just change the demographics. So if we have 260 in the before, there's still going to be 260, but it's going to change the makeup of those kids or?
Well, that's an interesting question that I don't know that I can answer. It could very well increase the number of students that we have in gifted and talented programs. It certainly wouldn't decrease the number of students. We would just really like to have a program that is more representative of our student population. We know that we, the current model that we use right now does not necessarily identify the gifts and talents of our students of color as we would like to. So we could add more or we could rearrange. And that's what we need Purdue to help us with because we don't have the capacity to do that ourselves right now.
Nancy?
You anticipated, most of my questions, we had to come up with other ones. But just, it's a $2.3 million grant over five years, total over five years?
Correct.
And you anticipate that at the end of that, we will, if we like the results, be able to, without replicate that in the other schools without that kind of cost?
Well, right, we won't, we won't have a significant impact financially to the district. The biggest cost is the training and the professional development and the data analysis. And we'll, we'll develop our own capacity to do that over the course of time and then be able to sustain that.
How do, do we know if this integrates with the IB programs that we have in our elementary schools and how that interaction will happen?
Yes, that was actually one of the very first questions we asked them. There are several IB schools in the study. And it does not detract from any of our IB philosophy.
And my last question is, how are we going to measure whether we think this has been successful? I'm taking Jim's question. Sorry, Jim.
I think, I can think of a couple of ways. Number one, we promote academic achievement for all of our kids. This is a good model for all of our kids. So it fits with our goal of closing the achievement gap. And I think another measure of success will be that we have a program, a GT program, that better represents our school district demographics. It would be great to see more students of color in our GT program. And that would be a measure of success if we were able to accomplish that and do a better job for all.
So you keep some of that baseline data so that when you come back to us, we can see what?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Joe?
So first of all, very excited about this program. I've been hearing about it from the superintendent for months and very excited to hear more about it this evening. My question, as somebody who did much better in one subject than other subjects, does the clustering, can the clustering reflect that? So if, if there are students who are excelling in math, but maybe not the other subjects, that they can be clustered for that subject? Or does the clustering kind of stick with all subjects together?
Well, we can look at that, we can look at the information in many ways. The data that we are provided, there's a composite score, but there's also qualitative and quantitative data. So if we wanted to go to a subset of data like math, so going back to my third-grade example, if we have two classrooms where we're clustering gifted and talented students, there might be one that is primarily students that are higher achieving in math and one that are higher achieving in reading. And they would still be in the GT cluster, but it doesn't necessarily mean they have to be identified in both to be, to qualify for the cluster. We have many, many students that qualify in one area and not another. It's rare that we have students that qualify equally in more than one area.
So each classroom is going to have a mix of abilities of students?
Mm-hmm.
Just a smaller mix so that the teacher can handle them better?
Correct.
I have a question, the model, or did you have another question? Okay, go on.
Does the program include, is it able to have immersion also like our PSI? Can they do it also?
Yes, but we are, we are looking just for the pilot to be in the IB school because immersion adds a wrinkle that we aren't necessarily ready to add just yet. We've spoken extensively with Purdue. There are other districts here in Minnesota and other districts across the nation that are participating that will have immersion schools. And so they will be able to participate too. We're just not going to start with PSI.
I'm a little confused on what we've been accepted for because your description talks about treatment and control schools. You said we were accepted, but then you said there's 14 or so and we hope to be one of the eight. What are we and can we use total school cluster grouping even if we're a control?
We, yes. We do do versions of total school clustering right now. And I certainly didn't mean to confuse you. There are, there, this is a little bit of work on the part of the school district to provide the support and to provide the access to the training. So all of the districts that are listed here have been accepted into the program, but they, that doesn't mean that they will be able to follow through with the program. We intend to follow through. Being accepted was just the first hurdle for us. We've declared that we want to be in even though that we haven't identified which school we're going to be in. Purdue tells us that there will probably end up to be eight districts across the state. We intend to be one of them. We are not in or out or in or out. We are totally in in terms of what we have been accepted to do. Our intentions for bringing this forward for your consideration tonight. There's no board action required. It's just information only. But we do think that this is also a valuable opportunity to collaborate with some of our other districts across the state to do this work. We're all trying to build our capacity and learn from each other. So it's great to have the opportunity here. We are so committed, in fact, that we are offering to have the training here for all of the districts that do decide to participate.
Well, smart. Why should we travel?
That's right. We, come to the park.
All right, Bruce?
Carrie, you know, I support everything you do.
I do.
I just wonder, is there any downside to this? And I ask the question just from the standpoint, if I were a parent and my child were going to be in the gifted and talented program and it tested that way and we're in the percentage that would be in the top kids, are they going to lose something in this program? And again, I hear what you say, that it'll be in the classroom, it'll be throughout the day instead of being pull-outs. And I like that aspect of it. But I'm just wondering if there's, if you've thought about any downside to this, especially in communicating with the family in the next steps and that kind of stuff?
Well, there certainly is always unintended downsides. We haven't identified any downsides. I am a parent of a gifted learner and I wish my school district would have had this for her. I should be clear, our Level Four students, our most highly gifted and talented students, will still get additional support. So this is primarily a benefit for students that are what we call Level Three and Level Two students who only maybe get to see our gifted and talented teachers once a week for an hour. So instead of getting an hour of support, they're getting support from their classroom all day, every day. And that is, that is a huge benefit. We haven't specifically identified any downsides. The research from the total school clustering model doesn't identify a lot of downsides. But there could be some things that just take us a while to work out the kinks. Maybe that's not a downside, but work out the kinks with changing practice and building understanding of what it is that we're intending to do.
Great. Thank you. And I do think it sounds like a great program.
Karen?
So I, I have one of those kids and, too bad he's not in elementary anymore. But what I'm excited about this is you're going to be able to focus not only the GT teacher's energy, but the classroom teacher's energy in a way that's going to benefit all of our students. That's what I'm really excited about this. Everybody gets more of what they need. So thank you for pursuing this.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And the information. Last item on the discussion is the signers for the district payments at Citizens Bank. And that's Sandy Celine about why we need to change signatures.
Yeah, this is always an ongoing process when there's changes in officers on the board as well as staff members. And since there was changes for officers on the board, we have to make the changes with our banks. And that's what this process is starting. And Cindy will have some documents for you all to sign to make this process complete. And it's on your approval item.
Any questions for Sandy? I can't believe it. Okay, we will move on. The next item is the consent agenda, which is a no-discussion item. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Motion by Bruce?
Second.
Second by Ken? Any, no, no discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? Motion carries seven zero. First item in the action agenda is the approval of the resolution for general obligation bonds on health and safety. And it's recommended that the school board approve the resolution calling for the general obligation bonds to finance certain health and safety projects as presented, and specifically that was the eight-year wraparound model. Is there a motion? Move by Nancy?
Second.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion of the bonds for health and safety? Nancy?
You know, I think we are likely to support this. And I think one of our mission statements is to provide a safe environment for students. This, this funding comes out of health and safety dollars. It will certainly be a good upgrade for all three of our pools that are well-used, both by the community and some of our curricular uses. So I, I'm glad for this recommendation and that we have a way to finance it and go forward at a fairly minimal impact on our taxpayers at, I think, $2 a year increase for the next year. So I think it's, it's worth doing.
Anyone else? Karen?
With this being a roll call, do we need to go down the line then?
We will, but just right now is discussion on just anybody that wanted to ask questions or have any comments. Okay, if there are no further, now we need a roll call vote. So Karen, would you call the roll?
Nancy Gores?
Aye.
Ken Morrison?
Aye.
Jo Tatalovich?
Aye.
Julie Switzer?
Aye.
Jim Yarosh?
Aye.
Karen Waters, aye. Bruce Richardson?
Aye.
All right, motion carries seven zero. The second action item is the approval of the Citizens Bank signers. It's recommended that school board approve the proposed signers for banking purposes at Citizens State Bank as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Nancy?
Second.
Second by Bruce? Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the signers, please say aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Last item on the agenda is communications and transmittals. Bruce, you got one, and then Karen after him.
I just want to acknowledge that our high school chorus was rated this year as, it's the first time, I guess in history, that they've gotten such an excellent rating. It's the top rating in the state. And I just, especially after the great job they did on ragtime, after all of the teaching points and discussion we had on the show for that chorus. And John Muskowski, as the director, just does a wonderful job with our choruses. And I just want to compliment the whole, the whole group and especially John for his great work.
I wanted everybody to remember there's a deadline for the technology survey. It's Friday, March 27th. It's a very simple survey. You go to the school district website, www.slpschools.org, and scroll down on the homepage and click on it. You do it by your child, whether it's elementary, middle school, or high school. The information will be very valuable as we move into further implementation with Schoology and some of our other technology issues here in the school district. So please, and I've done it, it really is less than five minutes. It's easy-peasy, so please, please do that. And then we're not meeting again until after the District Orchestra Festival takes place on April 9th at 7:00 PM in the old gym. So hopefully, there'll be a lot of people attending. And then one last thing on technology. The Peter Hobart PTO recently hosted Nate Tangen and Angela Franssen to do some parent education about digital citizenship and online safety for their kids. And the parents who attended that were really impressed with what they learned with our, with our two teachers. So thank you, Nate and Angela, and thank you, Peter Hobart, parents for getting online with their kids. Appreciate it.
Great. Anybody else? Nancy?
I'll just share, you know, we may hear about this again at a spotlight at some point, but the Echo, one of our great student publications, won the Gold Crown Award at the Columbia Scholastic Press this week. And that is sort of a hybrid award recognizing its excellence in both web and print media. They have a wonderful online paper as well as a print paper. And they just do such a great job. So congratulations to the Echo, Lori Keakley and her outstanding student staff.
Okay, anybody else? Oh, thank you. Then I'll have two. We are going to probably reschedule the April 11th listening session because a number of conflicts came up for our board members. So we'll be looking to do it a week or two later. We thought we'd still stick with a Saturday in order to have a different day and time of day than before. And we'll have that up as soon as possible. Board members, if we ask if you can participate, if you can respond as quickly as possible so we can get that rescheduled, that would be helpful. And the other piece is, this is more for students and parents. There's probably more parents than students listening. But in a conversation with a city council member the other day, he mentioned that a lot of our city commissions have spots for students that are unfilled. So if we, we're going to try and get a list of which ones have room for students. And it's a great opportunity, most are not very demanding in terms of time, but can be great experiences. I participated on something like that back when I was in high school. It actually was the It actually was the bicentennial. Can you believe it? That was like a centennial ago, it feels. But we'll get the list of openings, and maybe some of our teachers or teachers like Leanne Stevens or others could tap students on the shoulder because it's not always the kind of thing you raise your hand for, but there's lots of students who might say, "That's a great idea," if somebody says, "Why don't you consider this opportunity?" So we'll get that information. And if there's nothing else that anybody's thought about, then it is time for adjournment, and is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I heard motion by Ken, second perhaps by Jim, and all in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.